Good, how are you doing? No heading today.
Oh, good. No, I'm asking for you.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools. Please join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we have all board members in attendance except for Director Burnick, who is not here tonight. We will move on to open forum. In accordance to board policy, to a three or 15-minute time period is set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum thing on the board agenda. Sign-up sheets are available at least 10 minutes prior to the meeting at the door. We've gone over the rules quite a bit in the past. I think the community is pretty aware of what they look like. And the policy is out there. Tonight we have two open forum speakers, and I will call up, the first is Rachel Higgins.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Higgins. I'm an EL teacher at Hamilton Ridge. Since 2010, though, I have worked at Westwood, Five Hawks, Edgewood when it was a half-day kindergarten center, early childhood ECFE, Laola de Lago Bridges, and now I'm full-time at Hamilton. So I've had a few roles in this district, and I've seen a lot of changes since 2010. This year, especially with Dr. Thomas, our families have been more emboldened to share their stories and to share kind of their concerns. I did have several parents that wanted to be here tonight, but because of the last-minute notice that there was an open forum, they were unable to make it, so I have some testimonials that they've asked me to read. One of the things that I love about my job as an EL teacher is I get to empower our students and our families. They come into the United States, or sometimes just even into Prairie Lake Savage, not knowing the language of the education system and all of its little idiosyncrasies. For example, at Hamilton Ridge, we have you get a climbing the ridge ticket when you're doing something really well. We had a family just move in from Ukraine, and the dad said, "Oh, my goodness, what is wrong? Why did my son get a ticket? What violation did he do? What was he climbing?" And so even though the dad spoke English, the meaning behind what we were saying was completely misconstrued, and it really caused a lot of angst for the family and anxiety. Another example is I speak Spanish, which is very convenient. Prior to Maria Medina being our cultural liaison for Spanish speakers, I had to balance my job of being an EL teacher of students from 15 different languages with families calling, needing to set up conferences, having questions about getting health forms. My favorite part, beginning of the year, health immunization forms. All of these little pieces that need to be done, I was doing in addition to my job. And we do have several EL teachers that are bilingual, but we have also the responsibility of providing access to the education for our students. We only have so many hours in the day, and I was working a lot. We were luckily able to support funding for a Spanish-speaking cultural liaison. Then came the need of all of our Somali families moving in, and really, truly, they were advertising within their community to come here. It is well-known that Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools has a great education system, so they recruit families, they tell them where to move, and everyone started moving into our system. With that, of course, comes the cultural differences and disparities, and again, having those communication mishaps, I guess you could say. And luckily, we were able to hire Ali Miray. So with that, I would like to share with you a testimonial from our high school EL teacher, as well as the students from the high school, about each of our cultural liaisons. I know our numbers continue to increase, and we would love to have additional staffing, but I just wanted to share their feelings and thoughts with you.
So Rachel, thank you. You're out of time.
Okay.
Because our time limit is three minutes per speaker.
Oh, perfect.
But if you want to share them via email, we are.
I would be happy to.
Please.
Thank you so much.
Please do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Nekka Cedarstrom.
I'm going to be really brief, because I feel like Rachel was going probably in the same direction that I'm going in. And basically, all I want to say is, as a parent of the district, my hope is that our district leaders will do everything they can to improve access to teachers of color for our children. They need to see themselves reflected in the people that are supposed to be their educators, their learners, the people that they're supposed to grow from. Our world is not unicultural. Our world is not uniracial. It's not uni-ethnic. And if they're going to be global leaders in tomorrow's days and be able to work with people who are outside of who they are and who they grew up with, they have to be exposed to it. It is an impossibility to maintain a unicultural life and then expect our children to leave Prairie Lake and go be thriving anywhere else. Prairie Lake has very much a white-dominated community. It's not a bad thing. But it is an opportunity to learn that by looking through just that lens, you miss out on what the entire world is. Because if you look at the world, white people are the global minority. So that's not who our world is. Our children need to be able to live and thrive in an experience that allows them to become their best selves. And my expectation from district leaders is that they offer opportunities for kids to see themselves and other adults who come from different places, who speak different languages, who have different lenses, and can provide for them an opportunity to thrive that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
For this evening, we will move on to the approval of the board's motion to approve.
So May.
I am May. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. Next is our consent agenda. So the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item. Today's consent agenda includes the financials, which include the check-wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement from December 2022, PMA financials, monthly wire detail, monthly health, dental, wire detail, monthly check detail, and monthly ACH detail. It also includes contracts exceeding $25,000 enrollment report, which is a monthly report, approval of the school admittance from January, personnel items, so candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, nonrenewals, district retirements, and leave. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. So the next item on our agenda is a resolution for the acceptance of gifts. This will be done by roll call vote. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts?
So May.
By Director France and Director Alstead. And the resolution accepting donations this month includes the Laker Educational Foundation, $1,000 towards Tech at the Department of Public Health. Dan and Andrew, $40 for student student aid, and $30 for community. This is a roll call vote, so I.
Yay.
Aye.
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 That passes 6-0.
And then we will move on to Laker Pride, and I'll hand that off to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you so much, Chair Crosby, Board of Directors. This evening, I'd like to call a few folks forward in recognizing their participation and support in our Patriots' Pen Essay. Just this past fall, the local VFW sponsored an opportunity for students to write about, you know, why they are a great American. And I think similar to what we just heard, I think there's a lot of stories that our students engage in that allow them to demonstrate their patriotism and their love of country, and also their love of community. And so tonight, I would like to call forward our Global Studies teacher, Lorinda Welch, Assistant Principal Melissa Canetl, and they will introduce our eighth grader from Hidden Oaks Middle School, who placed second at state for his Patriots' Pen Essay, Chase Walgrave. And I'll have you all talk a little bit about the program. And then Chase will come up forward, and we'll have certificates, pictures, family that might be here as well to honor his accomplishments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lorinda.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Yes, I'm Lorinda Welch. I am Chase's incredibly proud eighth-grade Global Studies teacher. Each year, I have my students participate in the annual VFW Patriots' Pen Essay. This year's theme was "My Pledge to Our Veterans." It's a very short essay that starts at a local level, so we drop off the essays at the Prairie Lake VFW where they are judged. Then the local level gives out cash prizes, and it moves on to the regional level. Chase is one at the regional level. He made it to the state level. He got second in the state of Minnesota. And the last level would be the federal level or national level in Washington, D.C. So, Chase?
Hello. I'm Chase, eighth grade, yeah. And I'd like to talk a little bit about what the essay was and what inspired me to write it. I had read, so after being assigned, because it was originally an assignment, I read a New York Times essay, or not an essay, it was an article, about how saying thank you to our veterans was not enough. And it was interesting to me, because it talked about how, yes, saying thank you is respectful, but how they hear it so much, and how it, over time, it's kind of gotten like, I mean, it's kind of lost its meaning, as in like, post, like, say, post-war, it would have a lot of meaning, but over time, when it's, when you hear it over and over and over, it's like, I'm trying to think. It's kind of like an overused sponge, I guess. And, yeah, that's, yeah. That's what inspired me. And then writing the essay, I think, was really fun. I found it very engaging and just fun to research and learn more about the project or the subject. Yeah, sorry.
Can you share what was your, basically, your pledge to our veterans? What was your action?
So my pledge to our veterans was to educate myself about political candidates that can help them. So yes, you can, like, say thank you for your service and donate, but the ultimate way to support them is by electing officials who will ultimately give them the things they need, as in VA hospitals, and give them more access than just being limited to VA hospitals, and giving them housing, funds, and just support in general. I mean, it's a well-known fact that they have been, there's, I don't remember what the statistic is, yeah, statistic is right off the top of my head. Yeah.
Well, Chase, we applaud your efforts and really appreciate your ability to do research on something that initially started as an assignment, but also then warranted your own personal interest, and I think putting together an action that you could take as well to really benefit our veterans. So thank you so much, and thank you for representing Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools. We are very, very proud of you. And we would like to call you up forward for a certificate of appreciation, as well as our staff to come forward as well, and we'll do a picture to post on our website. Can we give him a congratulations?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Mom, Dad, you want to come forward, we'll get a picture.
Yeah, come forward.
Thank you, Rachel.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chase. Thank you, Ms. Welch. Wise, wise words for an eighth grader. Your future is bright. We're excited. We'll move on to personnel items, and we have an annual resolution that we're going to look at tonight. The board has requested to adopt annually. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and/or reducing programs and positions if necessary?
So May.
Director Velazquez, do we have a second?
Second.
Director Alstead, do you want to add any context to this for us, Dr. Thomas?
Yeah, so this is an annual resolution that we do each year before we go into our budget and staffing season. Essentially, share that we have contracts that guide our decisions based upon our budget and any staffing adjustments that we need to provide. So that's essentially what our resolution covers.
Any questions? All right. Roll call vote is requested once again. I'll start with Director Alstead. Director Bullion?
Yay.
Director?
Is it aye or yay?
Affirmative. Director Velazquez?
Aye.
And aye. Okay, that passes 6-0. We are moving on to our memorandum of understanding. Board approval of the memorandum between the district and MSEA for the 22-23 school year is requested. Do we have a motion to approve the MOU?
So May.
Director France, a second?
Second.
Director Velazquez, and do we want some more context?
Yes, thank you, Chair Crosby, Board of Directors. This evening, we'll actually have our Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Tammy Fredericson, speak to this MOU.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Board Chair, members of the board. This is a memorandum of understanding for our MESU union, basically to get them in line with the other unions in the district. It's giving them essentially a leave-sharing program, and then we will include them in a leave-share committee, and this will remain in effect through the 23-24 school year, which time we'll review it again.
Great. Any questions or discussion from directors? We've all had a chance to review it in the packet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. And unfinished business. This I will open up for discussion, but Dr. Thomas will give us some background here as well. The General Obligation School Building and Capital Facilities Refunding Bonds, Series 2023A, the information is in our packet about refinancing these bonds or selling them, actually, yes. And I need a motion to approve, please.
So May.
By Director Bullion, and a second.
Second.
By Director France. Dr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Chair Crosby and Board of Directors. This evening, we actually have a representative from Ilers, Mr. Jeff Seeley here, who will actually brief the board on this topic. And so with that, Jeff, you can come forward to the podium.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you. As you know, we were looking at refunding or refinancing several of your bonds, and the way we do that is we sell new bonds, called refunding bonds, to pay off the old bonds. So this morning, we took bids. We did a competitive bid, advertised nationally, and we took the bid. So tonight, I'm going to go over the results of that. Then you have a resolution to award the sale of those bonds that you will act on tonight. So these bonds are being sold to refund your 2013C bonds, which were school building refunding bonds. So going back about 12, 15 years, you issued some school building bonds with voter approval. You've refunded those since, and this is a second refunding of it. And then your 2014A capital facility bonds, this is the initial refunding of those. They were issued in 2013 and 2014, respectively. So today, we took bids, but before I get into the bids, I want to say that this bond, this new bond, oops, I touched something here, saw things flash. This new bond has, carries two different ratings. One is the state credit-enhanced program rating, and that rating is on the state program that will step in should there be a default. So that carries what we call a credit-enhanced rating. It helps with lower interest rates for you, because it lowers the risk of the bonds to investors. You also have your own rating. It's a AA2. It's an excellent rating. So top rating is a AAA, then a AA1, and then a AA2. So it's the third tier of many. It just keeps going down after that. Excellent rating. A couple of the credit strengths, you have a strong local economy, strong regional economy, too, being part of the Twin Cities. You have a very healthy tax base. Your finances, financials, and your fund balance are very healthy and stable. So congratulations for both, you know, the internal management of your budgets to create a situation where you get a very strong rating, and of course, you have some outside influences like the tax base and the regional economy that helps. So we did receive six bids. The winning bid was JP Morgan of New York. The low bid was 2.71, the high bid was 2.9. So a little bit of a spread there. We estimated 3% true interest cost. We got a 2.71, so we actually did better than the estimates. And if you've been following rates, last fall, we were looking at refunding this, and all of a sudden, rates jumped fast, and it basically wiped out all the savings. So issuing new bonds, we couldn't get the rates we needed to make, you know, savings. So then after the first of the year, we started seeing rates drop, to the point where we estimated it'd be worth going ahead and saving some funds. And since then, the rates have come down even a little more. So the total savings is about $342,000. Now, that is a savings directly to taxpayers. It doesn't create money in your budget. It's savings to the taxpayer. And you did receive six bids on that. So the closing date, which is when the money from the new bonds will be transferred to an escrow account, we're setting it up, the escrow will pay off the old bonds, is March 8th. The redemption date, when the escrow closes and pays off the old debt, is April 11th. And tonight, you have the resolution to award the sale. And you do have a sale day pack or sale day report that's in your packet, and I guess the main schedule, and we show the prior two bond issues and so forth, but the main schedule is on attachment, page six. This shows your savings. Now, one of the bonds was larger than the other, so one bond carried the majority of savings, but the other one still saved a sufficient amount to go ahead and combine it with the first one. So we took two bonds, combined it into one. That gave you some upfront cost savings, because economies of scale. We had one bond instead of two. And you can see the reduced debt service is $342,000. And then I did include the credit opinion from Moody's after that at the back. So if you want to read how Moody's views your school when they're doing a rating, that's included in there for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or discussion? I guess you answered our questions. Does, I have a question. Does it lengthen the term?
It does not. It matches the existing term.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we will.
Thank you so much.
Yep, we're good? You don't, okay. Yeah, just want to make sure everyone talks if they want to talk. All in favor of the refunding of the bonds?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 6-0. Thank you again for coming tonight. We will move on to new business, which includes our mid-year data review. This is a quarterly report. No board action is requested. Dr. Thomas, would you like to do the introduction?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Crosby, Board of Directors. You know, when we started this year off, we modified the main document around a variety of district priorities to focus in on two, and that was the academic framework, as well as the climate culture within our schools to support the academics. And so tonight, we are going to be giving you a winter-to-fall comparison for our first quarter on our FastBridge assessment. So Jenny Zumbusch, who is our Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and Continuous Improvement, will come forward to share the information around our FastBridge, and then also we'll have other staff ready to talk about, now, what does this mean for practice in schools? Some of this may be included in some of her shareings, but we also have other staff who will talk about programmatic shifts, changes, and actually, the outcomes that we're seeing in terms of the data and instruction. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Chair Cosby, members of the board, Superintendent Thomas, thanks for having me. We are here to give you an update on our mid-year data review. I wanted to start off by talking about some of the data beliefs that we've been working on over the past couple of months, and some of the things that we're working on, level setting across the schools about data. These are draft beliefs. Feedback is welcome, but this is just kind of how we're level-setting across the data, across the district about data. An individual data point rarely gives us an answer. It typically leads us to further questions and reflections. We also have talked a lot about how a single data point would never tell an entire story of what might be happening in this scenario. So again, just having teams and schools understand that we would never, you know, look at a single data point in order to fully understand what might be going on. This is from Dr. Thomas. Data is developmental, not judgmental. We don't look at data and decide that a teacher is doing a good job or not. We are really looking to look across the system and identify areas of success and areas for growth and additional areas that we can provide support. We also believe that there's multiple possible explanations for why a data point might be where it is, and that really, that data point opens up an opportunity to explore that and to really understand what might be going on in that scenario. FastBridge is our screener that we use. It is currently K8 that we use FastBridge for a screener. It's given for the academic components three times a year, and in reading and math. We also have a data, or a emotion, sorry, we have a behavior component, which is called Sabers, given less frequently, but that covers social, academic, and emotional behavior. And again, that's a screener, which basically means that we're identifying areas of concern for that individual student and areas that we could provide additional support. We use this data for a couple of different reasons, or in a couple of different ways. This is how students are determined if they need an intervention. That could be a behavioral intervention or an academic intervention. It also might help teachers put small groups together, and then also kind of reflect on what might be going well with instruction and areas for improvement. We look at this data at all levels. The individual classroom is looking at it. The teams are looking at. and additional areas that we can provide support. We also believe that there's multiple possible explanations for why a data point might be where it is. And that really, that data point opens up an opportunity to explore that and to really understand what might be going on in that scenario. FastBridge is our screener that we use. It is currently K8 that we use FastBridge for a screener. It's given for the academic components three times a year and in reading and math. We also have a data or a emotion, sorry. We have a behavior component, which is called Sabers, given less frequently. But that covers social, academic, and emotional behavior. And again, that's a screener, which basically means that we're identifying areas of concern for that individual student and areas that we could provide additional supports. We use this data for a couple of different reasons or in a couple of different ways. This is how students are determined if they need an intervention. That could be a behavioral intervention or an academic intervention. It also might help teachers put small groups together and then also kind of reflect on what might be going well with instruction and areas for improvement. We look at this data at all levels. The individual classroom is looking at it. The teams are looking at their grade level data. The entire school is looking at it. I have been to a number of BILT, which is the Building Instructional Leadership Team meetings, and we've talked about it there as well. And we're also looking at it at a systems level here at the district. Just to kind of level set, to clarify, I know that we often have questions on, you know, does FastBridge predict results on the MCA? This is something that we're also level setting across the district is really what FastBridge tells us. It is a screener of skills, and these are skills that are predictive of future academic achievement of students. So these are kind of more granular pieces of information that are kind of abilities that underpin the standard. A standard is a more comprehensive look at what the student knows and is able to do by the end of a particular grade level. So these, if you kind of think about the skills that FastBridge is looking at, those skills kind of stack up and can tell us whether they're prepared for meeting that standard. So this is not something that is 100% predictable of the MCAs, but we know that if the students fall behind in these skills, that they're unlikely to meet the standards that are looked at in the MCAs. We've done a lot this winter on data capacity building in schools. We built out a FastBridge Google site. If you recall, Fast was implemented initially during the pandemic. So it has varied level of implementation across the system just because of that timing. So we're looking to just level set and make sure everyone has the same kind of baseline understanding of FastBridge and the purpose of it and how to use it. So that was the purpose of the Google site that was rolled out to the buildings. And they were also provided these data beliefs and this breakdown of kind of standards versus skills to make sure we're all in the same, kind of talking the same language. We focused a lot on growth reports this winter. That basically determines whether a student is above or below the national average for the growth that they made from the fall to the winter. This is kind of a unique period to look at data because we have data from the current school year, and we still have an opportunity to make a change before the end of the school year. You know, in the fall, teachers are looking at data from, you know, a previous, you know, previous teacher, and they maybe don't know the students as well. And then in the spring, you know, they're kind of off for the summer. So this is a very unique opportunity to really dig into the data and figure out what might be working, what maybe are additional supports that we can provide for students and teachers. So we really dug into those growth reports. The site that we built out has a way to walk through an example of a growth report and then for teachers to walk through with their own data. This is also, we're looking at the family side of things as well. This was the first time we've had conferences in February and also the first time that FastBridge family reports were sent home. They were provided, they were backpacked home with the report cards. So kind of trying to build that understanding amongst parents as well. A comprehensive look of the FastBridge screener data. It was analyzed by grade level and by school and all sorts of slices and dices. And for the most part, that growth data from the fall to winter looked very similar to what it did last year. There was two particular areas that stood out as areas that we wanted to investigate a little bit further, kind of question marks that we had. One of those, I'll go into a little bit deeper to just kind of illuminate that continuous improvement process that we have in place. The other area was third grade math. This, just so you all know, this is a cohort of students who had their kindergarten year interrupted and first grade hybrid. It's a cohort that's being watched across the state as a concerning one in terms of the support. So as you know, we're implementing a new math curriculum in the fall. And this cohort in particular just already is having some extra eyes on them, and it will as well during our math curriculum adoption in the fall. So I'm going to tell the story a little bit about our continuous improvement process that we put into place with our kindergarten reading data. Okay, so we identified that there was maybe some, you know, questions about what was going on with our winter data for kindergarten. So we went out into schools, met with kindergarten teachers, met with BILTS, which is the Instructional Leadership Team, and really tried to dive in to understand what was going on there with that reading data for the kindergarten, the kindergarten level. One of the things we identified is kind of a timing misalignment between the scope and sequence of our curriculum and the assessment window. The way that the scope and sequence is happening this year is a little bit different from last year, and the assessment window is the same. And so the assessment was looking to assess skills that had not been taught yet at that grade level. Again, that doesn't, that's another piece of information that doesn't necessarily tell us what to do, but that's another contextual piece that we kind of dug into further. One of the things we are going to do is we are going to take three schools that, and there, we are going to reassess those kindergartners again. Again, this is a FAST. It's not a lot of time. It's at most seven minutes a student. Looking at a few sites again to see whether that data is adjusted after they complete their next unit, which would then cover the skills that were assessed in that winter assessment. The other things that we're looking into is that, you know, maybe that's something we should do to, maybe we should have a reflective conversation with instructional leaders and kindergarten teachers about that pacing and, you know, reflecting to see whether that is something that we should adjust back to what it was previously as well. The other thing is, you know, is we found that there were, even with this pacing and scope and sequence, there were certain classrooms that were having really high growth in that same period. So looking into what those classrooms were doing a little bit differently that maybe got those results. There may be additional professional development that we can provide for teachers in that area if needed. The other thing that happened in between the posting of these slides and now was we identified an additional resource in our reading curriculum that would help address some of this, these gaps. And we've moved forward with purchasing and influencing that additional curricular material. And Dr. Edwards can talk about that more if you have any questions about that. But so there's a lot of different pieces that are going, and that's just kind of a peek behind the curtain of the kind of process we go through when we have a particular data point that we're looking into further. At the secondary level, the middle school is using our new EduClimer platform to do threshold reports. Assistant Principal Canetl is really leading that at the middle school level, looking to really have teachers have a better and deeper understanding of student profiles. That EduClimer platform gives us an ability to see kind of all of those different data components of an individual student in a very quick visual way versus kind of digging through the depths of infinite campus. So really building teachers' capacities to be able to look at that. The middle school is, you know, it's a tricky level because they're still working on some academic interventions, but then also kind of trying to implement what an early intervention model that's done at the high school where we're identifying students that may be falling off track due to attendance and behaviors and things like that. So they're really doing a lot for data literacy there at the middle school. At the high school level, we're working with a leadership group from the high school, including all of the content area leads, department chairs, to kind of figure out how to implement a data cycle process at the high school. This is something that we've implemented here at the district level, and we'd like to see that reflected in the high school as well. And kind of looking through at the high school level, what data they have to look at and what additional data might be needed in order to fill some of those gaps. We have some possible directions that we'd like to go in terms of additional data there, but we're still kind of working through that with the high school team. That will probably be put into place in terms of a plan for those early release days, those extra that you all graciously gave to us. We will be using those as kind of a deeper dive into data, possibly using those days for a data cycle at the high school level. And I believe you all have heard about BAR before, the Building Assets Reducing Risk Model. That really is kind of, it's at the ninth grade level currently. It's short cycles of innovation and intervention where students are receiving some sort of change or support and then looking at the data to see if that has impacted them. And that's something that we would like to take and expand out to other grade levels as well to the extent that we see that things are working. Great. So that's what I have for mid-year update.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you want to start a discussion, have questions for Ms. Zumbusch or any other people that are helpful that are behind the scenes with you?
Thank you for the report. I have one question. I was just wondering if you could share a little bit more about the leadership, the leadership group you stated that you are working with, with the high school? Who they are and what?
That was something that I was invited to join. So the high school has kind of put that together as representatives from all the different departments in order to kind of talk about learning team time and how that might shift, given the new early release days next year.
So it's an internal group?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
It's staff, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Teachers, mostly teachers and two administrators and the BAR coordinator, yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question about FastBridge. So the data that you're collecting, is it similar to the MCA data that you're collecting in the form of like how MCA tests are taken? And then also, is the FastBridge data shared with the state as like the MCA data is shared with the state?
It's not shared with the state, though that's really, that's not something that's mandated by the state. The MCAs are. It's something that we have in place for our continuous improvement process. And most districts throughout the state of Minnesota also adopt that, but that's not something that gets reported. In terms of the test itself, it's a little bit more, or the screener, kind of that whole idea of skills versus standards. It's really breaking down reading and math into kind of the grade, the grade level skill that's needed at that time of year to then predict results on those MCAs. So it's more stripped down in terms of word segmenting and blending. And the thing that FAST also looks at is what's called automaticity. So the extent to which students can kind of quickly come up with words or letter sounds, depending on the level, or kind of some of those math pieces. Because the research shows that the more that you have that automaticity, the more likely you are to be able to build on those skills. So it's a little bit more of, it's a quick check. It's a, it's a short period of time. For kindergarten and first grade, there is an adult that does the FAST screener with the student. Third and above, they do it individually on a device. The MCAs don't start until the third grade. So we wouldn't have any MCA data on those younger kids, but that, those like foundational skills are really important to track at that early level to see if they need intervention. So there's some differences for sure. It's just a little bit more stripped down in terms of the actual mathematical or literacy skill versus more of the grade level standard.
And this, is it, is it able to determine like, identify like gifted and talented students as well as maybe students who are struggling or both? Does it help to identify different needs for each student or?
Yeah, it's primarily used as a screener for intervention, but it also can determine whether students have different needs in different areas, including some of those advanced academic areas. You can tell whether they're trending in a particular direction and might need some, you know, enrichment. So it does work for grouping as well to not, yeah, just so that teachers can kind of differentiate and look at that information. But kind of back to the data beliefs, it's, it's one piece of information. The teachers have a lot of contextual information that is really important to know about their students and the testing environment that, you know, we take that into account and really let the teachers decide from a professionalism standpoint, what is best for those students. And it is a one moment in time, seven minute screener. So, you know, that's, it's important and it's one piece of information out of multiple.
Thank you.
If I may just add to Director Atkinson's question, all of what Ms. Zumbusch has also said, and then if we look at the need for significant intervention or significant acceleration, it would not suffice for like special ed testing or gifted testing. So we would have different parameters that we would engage students around that. So clearly, just screening around skill sets.
I had a question. You had mentioned during the presentation that this is the first time you sent those growth reports home with families. Did you receive any feedback on that? Do the families understand them? How did that go over?
I personally, I've only heard once, I got a thank you email, which was unexpected, I would say. Other than that, I think it went pretty smoothly. You know, we really asked teachers to, there was some hesitation, I think, on the part of some teachers to do that just because, you know, because of that staggered start or pandemic start to the FastBridge. Not all teachers feel that they can really speak to all the components of FastBridge. But we really encourage teachers to stick to what does this data mean for your child and what we're going to do in the classroom for the rest of the year and not feel that they needed to answer any questions. I do get quite a few inquiries from parents over the course of the entire year about their student's assessment information. I wouldn't say that I saw a spike of anything. So unless someone tells me otherwise, I kind of think no news is good news in that sense. Yeah, I think, I think, I think the report, it's specifically designed to be a family report. And we also sent home the sheet that really explains how to walk through that. And I think it does a good job of kind of showing families what that looks like at kind of a, the right level for a family to walk through that at home and understand that and walk through with their classroom teacher. We didn't set aside time specifically at the conferences for it because they're so quick and there's a limited amount of time that we have. So they were, if parents had questions about it, they could bring them up at conferences.
Forgive me for asking, middle school, was this also sent out for middle school? Or are you just referring to the report that was sent back for elementary?
Elementary.
Okay, but not middle school?
Mm-mm.
Is that coming or?
That's a good question.
Just Chris.
Actually, one of my, my next question was about, you know, there's a lot of, you know, trepidation sometimes about that, that change from elementary to middle school in particular and how the data and the information about the students actually goes through that transition to make sure that the students are still being serviced and their history and everything is known. Could you talk to that between FastBridge and EduClimer and how that works with the teams?
Yes, and if, if anyone else wants to come up, they can too. I, so the way that it's set up from a data privacy perspective is that individual teachers only have access to their current student rosters. They would not be privy to that historical data for those students. That really is housed in the PSTs, which are the problem solving teams, and more of the support staff, like social workers, would have access to all of that information. So for a variety of reasons, a teacher wouldn't have every piece of information from a student record come to them. But if they had relevant data in terms of their specific needs, they would receive that.
And Dr. Edwards can add a little context as well?
Yeah, add just a couple of items to that. With this upcoming, right now, we're highly engaged in the transitions as we're preparing for registration process. Our middle school folks will be going out to our elementaries, I believe, starting next Our middle school folks will be going out to our elementaries, I believe, starting next week to work. And so prior to that, we have, and we've been doing this for many years, collected the data that, that students have in our system, compiled that together. So we know a lot of that data about all of our students, all of our fifth graders who are coming to our middle schools. And actually use some of that data for placement of students into their respective schools so that we have balanced schools at both Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks. So that's one piece. And then, as was pointed out, some of that data, it just resides in Educlimer. And there is data that is in Infinite Campus, but teachers don't generally have access to that. However, guidance and administrative staff does, and they utilize that for their various team meetings and things of that nature at the middle school level specifically.
Thank you. Any other questions from Board Directors?
I'll, I'll finish. I do have one. We talked about FastBridge, Educlimer. I'm wondering about the emotional screener with Sabers and if we saw some outline data there this year or not, or what we learned.
I would say that we are still learning to use the Sabers data. That was something that has not been used previously. So we're still kind of in a learning curve in terms of using that. I think we know that there, we have used it for certain programmatic pieces. I'm trying to remember why I pulled that up. We did pull it for BAR, for example. We were looking at the historic data of students that were having, showing some challenges in BAR. And actually, this talks to that transition piece as well. Students that were struggling in the, in ninth grade in that BAR model. We were looking at their historic Sabers data to see whether that was something that kind of carried forward from middle school or was something new from the ninth grade level. So that is one piece that we've used it. So we haven't seen anything, we don't really have historical data to look at against, but I do think we know that some of these pieces are something that we do need to keep an eye on. And anecdotally, we know that this is something that's happening or of concern in our schools. Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for the next topic.
Yeah, thank you very much.
This is wonderful.
We are moving on to our 2023-24 preliminary budget update based on budget assumptions. There's no board action, it's just an update.
Yeah, thank you Chair Crosby and Board of Directors. Ms. Frederickson will be speaking to that this evening. But before she does, I'll just, for the board and for our community, I know there's a hunger or an appetite out in our community to have like that preliminary budget like a month ago. And we were just sharing with you all, just be patient, we've got numbers coming. We are in a very unique legislative session, to say the least. And things are, are starting to shake out. And, and I think we're getting a stronger sense of what is on the horizon as folks' proposals work their ways through various committees. And tonight, you're going to see our preliminary budget based on some budget assumptions. This is a great opportunity for the board to kind of weigh in on some of the conversations that you may be having with a variety of our elected officials or just your own general interests and knowledge. But I think what you'll hear tonight will give you a little thumbnail sketch on where we believe things are going and give some context. But, you know, and even when certain pieces, I think last week I shared with you all that we had, we were watching the trend that the universal lunch was going to go through, and it did. Now, what does that actually mean? Again, I think the, the details have yet to be established as to how that may impact other dominoes that are kind of wavering. Will that impact our base fund formula or not? Will that be included or not? I mean, there's a lot of wait and sees, even though we have bills coming through that are being passed. They're usually connected to some others, and so we're kind of closely watching that. I know a couple of you are going to be in session next week as well as I down at the Capitol, talking with a variety of elected officials with various groups. And so again, I just encourage each and every one of you to continue to leverage those connections. And we'll speak a little bit more about that on a later topic this evening with our draft legislative agenda. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Frederickson.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Chair Crosby, members of the board, thank you. I put together kind of our preliminary general fund budget tonight. As Dr. Thomas said, things are happening fast and furious at the Capitol. Already, the House and Senate both have got over 1,200 bills that they've proposed, which is kind of unprecedented. There, there's a lot of things happening over at the Capitol. So a lot of those would have potential impact on our budget. So we're kind of planning a basic scenario and then seeing what's going to happen at the Capitol as we move forward. So having said that, we do have decreased enrollment. So we're going to have decreased revenue just because of the lower enrollment. Most of our state aid money comes to us in form of per student. So obviously, we're going to get less revenue. We're also, our expenses are not going to exceed our revenue. That is one of the, kind of the tenants of building a budget that I want to stick to, that we don't want to overspend our revenue without a very specific plan. We have, so everybody knows, we got federal COVID dollars a few years ago. We have spent the majority of those, but we are going to look at spending what we have left in 2023-24, which will be right around a million dollars. The allocations that we're going to send to schools and departments are going to be based on student and operational needs. We'll talk about that in just a second. And then our projected fund balance, we're going to ensure that the unassigned and assigned fund balances are within the eight to 12% on the board policy. So given that, our revenue projections are looking right now to be about 111.3 million. So saying that expenses are not going to exceed revenue, we're going to build an expense budget of 111.3 million, which means there's zero fund balance change. And again, as we get further down the budget, this will be a constantly changing until it's finally approved in June. Our unassigned fund balance, we're assuming right now it's going to look like about 9.8%. And our assigned fund balance right now is looking to be about 9.3%. The assumptions that we're going to make as we build our revenue budget is our projected state levy and other entitlements are going to be included in that revenue. We're going to assume a 2% increase in the general education formula allowance. Now, the governor has proposed four. We are going to be conservative and assume a 2% and then have Plan B, C, and D if we in fact do see a 4% on the formula allowance. But given that we have the universal meals approved, our compensatory education revenue is tied to free and reduced lunch. So there may be some impact with the universal free meals that we need to also kind of keep in the back of our head as we plan those budgets because they haven't said how they're going to deal with those compensatory dollars yet. The remaining about million dollars of COVID we have until September 30th of 2024, that those dollars have to be spent or you will give them back to the government. We plan to use those for summer programming and learning loss recovery. So as we look at our expense budget, we're going to assume that the school expenditures are going to be based on student enrollment demographics and needs, which is, equates to a budget that's going to be equitable for all schools. And equitable may or may not be equal, but we're going to look at the demographics and the needs of the students at our buildings. Our department expenditures are based on the needs, and we're actually going through a process right now of zero-based budgeting model. All of our departments are putting together kind of from the ground up. What do you need to run your department? What are the functions that your department is responsible for? And then as we look at building those budgets out, we'll have a better idea of where we can set our priorities. The salary and wages, we're going to honor the current contract languages in accordance with the board guidance as we move forward with the future negotiations. And the majority of our COVID expenses are going to be completed. So as we build those revenue projections, we have to look at the enrollment. So using a three-year weighted average, this is a chart showing what the next seven years could possibly look like under a three-year weighted average. Again, this is the best guess we have right now, using a one formula, if you will. We will constantly monitor this as we move forward. We'll see what students are actually, come to the district in September. And if we need to adjust those numbers, we certainly will. And every year, we'll look at actuals and then adjust those three-year weighted averages. That line on the bottom is what our, by grade level, what our best guess estimate at this point right now is going to look like for 2023-24. If we look at our kindergarten enrollment, which we just kind of had most of, most of it completed at the end of last week. We have 344 students that were signed up for kindergarten enrollments. There are also 98 students from open enrollment that have not been assigned to a school, which means that our kindergarten right now projection is 442. And if you look at this previous slide, we projected 489. So we are slightly under what our projection was. And if this holds true, we'll need to look at our revenue projections and make those adjustments accordingly. Also show, there are also a few other students that open enrolled that we haven't counted in our enrollment yet. They're kind of scattered out throughout the grade levels. And then we also have the 2023-24 open enroll students that are already here that we've included in our enrollment counts. Our state aid estimate, I think last meeting I had talked to you about all the different elements in our levy and state. So I tried to break them down on here to show all the kind of complex formulas that go into building our revenue projections. So each of these lines is a state aid, it's a description of the state aid. And kind of, I tried to put in the calculation basis. That first line, the basic revenue, $7,000, that includes a 2% formula increase. So right now, we're at 6,823, 2% would put us at 7,000. So again, assuming the enrollment projections that we had, if you take all of these formulas, you get to a state aid amount of about 88.5 million dollars. And then the levy part of it, again, there's all of these different categories with a different formula that's based on the total revenue. This is what our approved levy looks like. You approved the levy in December. So we have 18 point, almost 18.2 million in levy that we'll be receiving. So if we take those state aid and the levy, that's 106.6 million. We also get grants, we're estimating that to be about 4.6 million. So that's where we got to the 111.3 million for our revenue projection. If you want to follow along, I did list on the Department of Education's Levy Certification Report, it's like a 45-page report. I did put the line on the levy report that you can find each of these formulas if you wanted to, to follow along. Although I don't know why you'd want to, but it's there if you want to match them all up. Some of the possible revenue increases that we may see, again, if we get 4% on the formula allowance, then we can look at an additional 1.3 million to add to our revenue. If we fully fund the special education cross subsidy, it's another 6 million. Now, the governor has proposed half, 50% funding, but all of the organizations, Masba, Masbo, kind of all of the professional organizations are advocating for fully funding special education. And there has been today, a lot of, kind of pleased at the Capitol, if you will, to fully fund that. So it's 6% if it's fully funded, 3% if the governor gets his 50%. So it's somewhere in between. So you can see we're kind of, given our best guess estimate right now. Right now, we did not build any of the additional cross subsidy in there because it has never been fully funded. So again, we could see another between 3 to 6 million to our revenue if, if any of this actually does happen. There's a proposal by the governor to provide aid for student support personnel. That would be about 190,000 additional that we could possibly see. And if he increases the safe schools revenue, that's possibly another 600,000 that we could see with the potential of another 8 million that we could see in our revenue. And again, all of this is looking in a crystal ball and trying to figure out what they're going to do over in St. Paul. So it may or may not happen. So that is kind of where we're at right now. I would love to give you some more finite numbers, but things are just not finite right now. There, there's just a lot of things happening over in, at the Capitol. And I wouldn't want to presume what they're going to end up saying and doing when all is said and done. So we'll continue to monitor it and continue to give you updates as we get them. And hopefully, by the time we're ready to present a final budget, they'll have made all their decisions and it'll be really truly a final budget. If I can take any questions?
Thank you for putting this together. It is a very fluid situation, probably more than, more than even typically. So we know it takes a lot of work and kind of constant shifting. And we had some conversations today about that, in fact, with special ed. And with that, I'll open up the floor to anyone who has questions.
I have a question, actually a couple, couple questions. But the first question I have is about the lunch. And so if the state is funding the lunch program, which my understanding is it's just going to be like the basic lunch program, that we would, this, this is what I read today, is that we would still supplement any of the extras, that the parents would, could, would supplement extras, that they would just be providing like a basic lunch program? If parents are currently paying for that currently and we're getting free and reduced lunch paid for by the state, wouldn't that be just like a cost neutral situation as far as our budget goes? Because you're basically just getting the funding from a different source versus getting it from the parents currently who are funding it?
Or the food part, for the food services, yeah. We get money, actually comes from the USDA, the federal government subsidizes all of our lunch and breakfast programs. But where we, where it is going to make a difference is the compensatory education revenue is directly tied to free and reduced lunch. And if you have a universal lunch program, you don't, there's no reason for you to fill out a, a request for free and reduced lunch. So there's no way for us to track that, which is the basis of a compensatory education revenue. So if they're going to pay for lunches, what indicator are they going to have for compensatory revenue to provide that? So either they're going to have to revise the entire formula or incorporate it in some other way. And they are, believe me, they're aware of the situation because I think every professional organization has brought that up. What are we going to do? And they, I don't even think they have a proposal yet on how it would affect it.
Thank you for clarifying that because I know as a district, we have a smaller portion than some of the other districts in the, the state is due. So thank you for clarifying that. The other question I have is around the enrollment numbers because I know that enrollment obviously is a big part of our budget. And just, I was looking at our enrollment report that we had sent out as part of the consent agenda. And we started nine through 12 with 2,988 students. And we're currently this month at 2,955. So we've had the biggest loss of students from coming out of the high school this year with a loss of 33 students. I think your number up here said for 2022-23, the number I wrote down was 3,026 students.
Yeah, and this is, it, it's really hard to nail down enrollment because it changes, as you can see on that report, it changes every month. So when we give kind of a, what is our basis, it's at a point in time and then it's going to be constantly changing.
I guess my question is, is we I guess my question is, is we've consistently dropped from the beginning of the year. So, what would make us think that we're going to gain students to make up that difference in the high school?
Probably younger class sizes.
This is specific to the high school numbers?
The incoming class size is larger than the outgoing.
Yeah, the eighth graders will be ninth graders next year.
But this is for the 22, 23 school year that I was looking at on the budget. Maybe I read it wrong, and I apologize if I read it wrong in your presentation. So, the first, the first, it's, I guess it's slide four. And the first year says 22, 23, grades nine to 12, 3,026 students. Maybe I misunderstood that.
Yeah, I can, I will verify the date of what we did for the actual date on the.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
What you're seeing here is the average that we're, this is our three-year.
Oh, it's a three-year average.
Average, oh, okay, all right.
This is different, that's your static, static number?
Yeah.
Yeah, the enrollment report is actual numbers that we are seeing, students that are actually there. But yeah, the assumptions are based on a three-year weighted average.
Okay, so that's what that number is, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I don't have any other question, questions, thank you.
I would like to add that every year, we do drop students from the beginning. I mean, you've got people moving. You have, you know, going to, you know, divorces happening and people going to different areas and stuff like that. So, 33 students isn't a lot compared to the overall percentage. But we almost always do lose students through the year for a variety of different reasons that are completely outside of our control. And when we have looked at in the past, they are truly outside of our control. So, that's something to keep in mind. But 33 students is a really small percentage, which we're grateful for.
Yeah, we're just not seeing any loss in any of the other grades we've actually added in the, the other grades, so.
That happens also in elementary and also from, especially between fifth and sixth grade and the transition years. That's a, that's a typical pattern we've seen since, gosh, since I've started looking at numbers since 2012.
Any other questions from board directors?
Yes, I have one, and I'm sorry to backtrack back to universal lunch, but I had another question. Does it matter at all? And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I learned this, since the high school is not a federal program because it's student-run, and we're, I think, the only school in the state to do that, does that affect things in terms of this bill that's currently in the works? And I don't want to put you on the spot, but I was just curious about that.
I think we're going to have to wait and see till, because it's passed the House, it still has to get through the Senate, and they could do some revisions. So, I mean, once, once it's kind of final, final, then we can really dig into it and see what that means for us. It, I mean, we can speculate, but it's, again, things are happening every day, something changes. But we'll, we'll keep an eye on that for sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You know, when we're talking about all these numbers and, and it's probably the, it's, it's a good year to, to be in education for the funding, there's no doubt about that. But I am a little worried about the discussions about inflationary factors and the fact that, you know, we don't want the complacency of, okay, we gave you all this money, and then it goes flat again like it has in the past. Can anyone tell me about the chatter they're hearing on that? Or, or any discussions on these bills of including the inflationary factor and making sure that if we do, let's say, fully fund the cross subsidy, that in a couple of years, we're, we're not going to be experiencing a deficit again?
Director Franz, that, that's actually the argument for every professional organization, both on the categorical and our basic formula, is to include inflationary factors so that we don't find ourselves here, you know, three, four years from now. So, every professional organization is pushing for that inflationary clause on categorical and base formula.
The governor's proposal for the gen ed formula does have, he's asked for inflation, but not till 2025. And then that would, but again, if the next two years, if inflation goes 14%, then we're still even further behind if he does build an inflation factor, because we'll never catch up.
And that's the general concern that I have, is that it looks really good on paper, and it also allows communities to be a little more complacent sometimes with, okay, you just got this money. But then we find ourselves falling backwards right away, and that's something that we, we kind of need to watch and fight for.
Any more questions before we move on? All right, we'll move on to, thank you, and we get to continue to our financial board report ending December 31st.
So, it is my pleasure to present you this monthly financial report. We will be including this in every month's packet from now on. We kind of did a very rough first version last month. You saw just one statement of changes in fund balance. And this month, we're trying to round it out and give you a lot more information on, on what the financial statements look like every month. Some of the highlights that you'll see on just that first page where we give you some of the highlights. We talk about the fund balance, and our current unassigned fund balance right now is at 14.7. But I want to stress that our fund balance changes like week to week. We get revenue, we pay bills, it's always going to, it's kind of a changing number every month. Right now, we're at 14.7. I mean, it, it will look different next month, it'll look different the month after. And some of the things to just keep in mind is in, in October and March, when the state gets their property tax payments, we don't, they don't pay us because they're doing those calculations. So, we're going to see a decrease in revenue in those months. We'll have quarterly revenue come in for grants as we report our grant expenses. So, it's, it's always going to change. But we wanted to make sure that you at least see what it looks like. This is as of the end of December. Our revenue in December was about 9.4 million. Eight million of that was related to state aid. We have cash and investments that totaled by 11 million, 9.5 of it was for the general fund. Our expenditures were 9.1 million. Majority of that was salary and benefits at 8.8 million. We also included some of the expenditures from our other governmental funds. We added a little summary of our COVID dollars and the payments that we've made. And then you can see some of the, the first page being the revenue and expenditure summary. If you'll notice on that page, which is page two of the document, in the local sources, we're, we're doing a comparison year over year, so you can see the changes. So, for instance, right now, our year-to-date totals for local sources is 8.9 million on a budget of 18.8, which means we've spent, or received about 48% of what we anticipate having. And then we compared it for the two years, so you can see. So, obviously, we, we get the payments in, we're not getting all of the money upfront, so we're just showing you what that looks like. And you'll see in fiscal year '21, it was 93%. And that was because there was a tax dispersment that wasn't done in December. You'll see that next month as it gets corrected. And then, the federal sources were significantly higher because of the COVID dollars. So, you'll see, again, just see the changes that happen every month and compare them to the previous two years. We have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, just comparing it year over year. We have a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance by fund. You could see all of those every month, and again, comparing it to the previous year. We did add our cash position. Again, that changes every month as we move forward. And then we also included a page that shows you all of our grants. So, you remember in the budget, when I projected 4.6 million is our grants? Right now, we have 4.8 million. And you can see what those grants look like. So, we anticipate having mostly the same grants. And then the final page, I've included a budget and actual expenditures for the board. One of the things that, and that I think has happened is you guys may not be totally aware of what your budget is and what it gets spent on. So, I'm just including this just for your information, so you can see kind of where you're sitting every month. And then compare it to the previous year and what kind of variances look like. If there's anything in this report that you want to change the format, or if we should add something, take something out, we are more than happy to do that. Again, this is just kind of our first version of, of what we're hoping to provide every month as we look at our financial statements.
This is really well done. I greatly appreciate it. And, you know, I have, it's my third year on the board, so I mean, it's not like I have this depth of experience. But in our decision-making, contract negotiations, you name it, like, this is, this is so incredibly helpful to understand in a very understandable way as opposed to the monthly ACH wire detail, or, you know, you know, breaking all of those down, which is important too. But this is a good, high-level view for us and a good measure for us to keep paying attention to. And when those percentages or those values change drastically, well, why? You know, there's, there's usually a pretty good why, so thank you.
Yeah, I have to give a lot of credit to Andrea Bradford and our accounting team. They put a lot of work into this document. So, as like I said, we'll, we'll be happy to update it every month. And, and hopefully, if there's questions on there, we can anticipate what you're going to ask and, and be able to explain some of those variances before you actually see the report.
Thank you. Any, anyone have any questions or discussion?
I just would like to add, I mean, with your, you stated with your two-year, or third year on the board, as a new board member, this is extremely helpful. So, I, I just want to extend my thanks as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, as a veteran, I think, here, you know, it, it's, it's the improvements that have been made in the transparency and the reporting and even the breakdown of the PMA investment funds and stuff like that in the beginning have been incredibly helpful. And I think it's a self-service to the community and to other board members, so they have it right at their fingertips to be able to look at this instead of asking the pointed questions and stuff like that, that, of things that are near. So, it saves time. Your team did a fabulous job putting the summaries together and the organization of the summaries. And I might add, from someone who goes to the MDE a lot and looks at those data reports, it's a one-to-one naming convention, so there isn't a lot of definitions that are missing. And that's, that helped a lot.
Thank you.
Any other?
As a data nerd, I love this, thank you very much. It helps to dig in a little bit deeper into the data and ask more specific, more precise questions versus the general, okay, how are we doing? How are we spending? Where are we at? So, this definitely helped us speak a little bit more intelligently on, on the topic of our, our budget and how we are effectively being good stewards of the public's money. Thank you.
Thank you, I think it's great as well.
Sorry, to that end, can I ask one more question? In terms of where this lives, I mean, it's so great for us to get it in our board packet every month, but in terms of the public, so is this something that can be, can live somewhere where they can see some? It's so bite-sized and so lovely and so understandable that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it on the website under the business office.
Great.
We'll have a little section that, for the monthly financials, we'll update that every month.
That's great, thank you.
Great question.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good job, thank you.
Tammy, that was really nice. We'll move on to the legislative platform that we, that is in draft form. We won't approve it tonight, but we'll discuss it. I just want to point out, so the exec committee worked with Dr. Thomas on this, and then he went back to admin and got some more feedback as well. And we've come up with probably our prettiest platform we've ever had, I would say. Friendly to read and look at, but also a lot of meat in there. So, I'm going to grab a few high-level points and we can discuss, I just want to call them out. Obviously, we've talked about the special ed, to fully fund special ed. I'm going to say it again, I'm going to keep saying it, sorry, but not sorry. This is the single most important and impactful decision that affects all learners by taking, currently, we're taking money out of the general ed pot for special education. We all support special education, obviously, but this is a huge, on our budget, six to seven million dollars. There's some movement there, right? But that's what it is, and that's real dollars for all our students. So, I'm going to keep talking about that. Also, addressing staffing challenges, you've heard us talk about that the last couple of years. Hopefully, it's getting better. But we have to keep, keep paying attention to that. And we did a little bit more of an increased mental health support focus this year for obvious reasons. And then, lastly, the whole piece around local control in terms of learning environments. And that continues to be something that is really important because each local environment is different. And so, having that control to meet our students' needs is super important. So, with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the board for discussion. I just wanted to give us a starting point. Any feedback, questions, concerns?
My initial thought from reading this, there's a lot here. And it's all important, it's 100%. Each, each of these five different areas, it's a lot and equally important. And I look at this and go, wow, we've got a lot to do, we've got a lot to advocate for, which I encourage members of the public to help us do that as well, because there's a lot here. And that was my initial thought when I looked at this in our board pack. I'm like, wow, this is very robust, almost like, do we need to even? I don't want to take anything out, you know, to focus, right? But it's all equally important. And I'm excited and anxious at the same time to really go and advocate for this because this is, this is so important. And I think I can speak for everybody there safely, I would imagine, to do that. But I, I'm, I'm excited to get started, and we need to get started, and there's a lot here.
Director Olsted, if I may, just speak to a couple of things. Chair Crosby, is that okay, come in on this? So, yeah, you do see a lot here, because we know not everything's going to make it across the finish line. So, we've got to put a lot of our local needs out there on the forefront. What Chair Crosby noted is that we did, this is very similar to where we were at last year, and I would say 90-plus percent in alignment with all the professional lobbying organizations right now out there in, in the field. But we also put ours into an infographic, which was different this year to really, I mean, as a legislator, you get hundreds of these things a day. And before, it was just words on a pa, on, on a page. This does stand out, this will catch the eye, I'm glad you caught that, no pun intended. But that is something that we wanted to make sure that puts us in a different category in terms of optics, so that they might actually slow down to read this. I would say, again, like I shared, these categories are the same when you look at any of the professional organizations in the lobbyists that are at the Capitol for K-12 right now. The one area I'll just emphasize too, that we really broke out separately, was school safety. I mean, my, my heart goes out to our colleagues in St. Paul for the tragedy that occurred, you know, in their district and many districts across the country. It's just, it's not something we ever want to experience in our community. And we can't say enough about how important school safety is when our students, our, our families send their students to, to school. That's the one thing we have to guarantee to the fullest extent possible. And again, again, you all just approved our district's first safety coordinator, which will deal with a lot of that work. But that's something that we wanted to pull out separately, that was kind of buried in mental health support. We did, again, talk a lot about the mental health component. This is directly from our special education advocacy group, essentially what we, what you see here. And then, lastly, really bolstering for local control. The last thing we need are strings. And quite honestly, that's what I'm a little afraid of. And quite honestly, that's what I'm a little afraid of when we start hearing some of the bills that are getting close to the finish line. What details will, will there be in those bills? And will they rob Peter to pay Paul? And are we going to see any kind of advance? Or is this going to be a zero-sum game? So, I'm playing conservative. I'm playing skeptical. But I'm advocating the heck out of what is best for our kids in our, in our local community. So, to your point, I encourage, you know, once the board, at the end of this month, lands on the direction that you would universally support, this will be something that we'll ask all of our community members to go forward, make calls to your local elected officials. And, you know, I met with Representative Baker last week and, again, shared our mutual interest in what we would like to see in this region of schools that he supports as well, to really start putting those bugs in his ear, to take those conversations forward. So, a lot here, knowing not everything's going to go. But can't, can't get it if you can't, if you don't ask for it.
Indeed.
Thank you. I just have one thing to add and, and kind of feeding on what you said, I think, you know, remembering the importance of ISD in our district, Independent School District, 719, and we have that across the whole state. So, I was, I was very pleased to see the list that was put together. I just have a question. You had mentioned the Capitol, a session at the Capitol next week. Is that, will that be represented by the executive committee? Or who is representing us at the Capitol for that session?
There is one for Schools for Equity in Education, which our rep is Director Bullion. So, I'm hoping she can go. I think she's planning to go. I don't know if other board members, I, I'm the former rep. I mean, I could accompany you, but you will be our.
Well, if you want to attend with me, I'd love that. But I will be there next Tuesday.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thanks.
To, to that point, too, once, once the board formally approves the, the platform, then I will convene our breakfast or with our local elected officials. And then we'll have some FaceTime directly with them, along with senior cabinet members, so that we can speak to these at greater depth. So, that, that will also be occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, yeah, to Director Olsted's point, this is a very weighty, very meaty legislative platform. However, each one of these different items are the exact items that we need for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, for our Independent School District, 718. We need every single one of these different items. Just kind of keying in on reducing those mandates or increasing local control. We can't necessarily compare ourselves with a rural school in northern Minnesota where they have completely different needs. So, having that reduction in mandates where there might be, I recall from the MSBA delegate assembly that there was a proposal for a STEM coordinator. Well, when you have a limited budget and you're in a rural environment and you're trying to figure out how you're going to sustain with the existing busing and equipment you have and berth of the plow and trying to hire just somebody to teach science, mandating that there be this extra coordinator that's unfunded, pulling those resources away from the vital things you need for all of your students in that district is definitely a disservice. That was just one of the many stories that I heard when engaging with peers across the state. Mental health support, we, we see it. We see it every day. We see it in our schools. We see it. When our students come home, there are a variety of different needs that come along with that. One thing I like to say is you can't necessarily go to the water park and not get wet. You can't go through some of these different challenges and walk out of it completely unscathed. That changes you. So, these are absolutely the, the right priorities. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I know we've talked a lot about how meaty this is and, and, you know, how significant all these different ones are. But I want to remind everybody, not only what we've been saying is that this has been here, year after year after year. But also, a, a large common denominator behind this is to get school districts off this merry-go-round of, you know, we give you school safety one year, but we've got no guarantee it's going to continue year after year. So, trying to budget to put in a safety system and not know if you're going to be funded in another two years or whatever is not an easy thing to do. Matter of fact, it's near impossible. And the same thing goes with the, all the other funding challenges and the staffing challenges and everything like that. What we're really trying to get here is consistency. You know, if you're going to fully fund education and it's broken down into these multiple parts, don't come back. Don't have a legislator that comes back and says, we will give it to you this time, but we're not sure it's going to continue. You know, that's, that's not sustainable. And by the way, it actually costs money, when you think about it, to go back in and replan and replan and replan every year. Either you're going to fully fund the needs of our students in our educational system, and you're going to keep it persistent, or you're not. And so, every area here is just areas that they've kind of, kind of played ping pong with over the years. And one of them, of course, is the cross subsidy that we've never really received. So, so, you know, if, instead of getting overwhelmed, let's look at this as a, as a start of a new momentum of actually fully funding our holistic educational needs instead of allowing groups and legislatures to actually pit one idea against another because they're all equally important and they have to maintain sustainability over time.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, thanks for that discussion. We will bring it forward for a vote later this month. We will move on to our more recent added item, the resolution for the MSHSL Foundation Grant Application. This will be a vote. Board action will be taken. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve. I'll ask for a motion to approve. Okay, we have Director Bullion, Director Velazquez. Okay, thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Good evening, Dr. Thomas, Board Chair Crosby, and representatives of the Board of Education. My name is Jeff Marshall. I'm the Activities Director for the District, and I'm here to present a resolution to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, where the Board of Education supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form B-2 grant to offset costs in three specific areas, including leadership initiatives, safety, and transportation that reduces barriers to participation. Specifically, I have put together a grant proposal to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, asking for $5,000. That goes directly toward leadership initiatives. The leadership initiatives that we are looking at bringing in are to support our, our leadership, student leadership with our Laker Leaders Program, which is made up of leaders of our different activities and our athletics at the high school. Additionally, we're also looking at a leadership initiative of being able to provide some additional professional development for our coaches and our advisors of all of our activities and our sports as well, too. So, the $5,000 will be geared specifically toward the Positive Coaching Alliance, Top 20 Training, and also Craig Hillier, to be able to provide these kinds of leadership experiences for, again, our student athletes and our activity participant leaders and our coaches and our advisors.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from Board Directors?
Was Craig Hillier the speaker who spoke at the Coffee and Conversations last year? Is that the same?
No, that was, Coffee Conversations was from Positive Coaches Alliance.
Oh, okay.
Tex was his name.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
We're going to continue on Positive Coaches Alliance for both of those groups, too.
All right. Well, I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor of approving the MSHSL Foundation Grant Application.
Hi.
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 Hi. All opposed? If that passes, 6-0.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Next item is our proclamation for School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, which is February 20th through the 24th. They deserve a lot of thanks. I think we all know this, especially on those very, very cold days and on the really hard weather days, too. And I'm sure there are some hard behavior days that, that come along with that job. So, Director France, will you read the proclamation for us?
I will.
Or does, let me pull it up here.
Okay, okay. Proclamation for School Bus Driver Appreciation Week is February 20th through the 24th. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes February 20th to the 24th, 2023, as School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers ensure the safety and well-being of our students while transporting them to and from school. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential members of the Prior Lake Savage Area community. Whereas, over 120 Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers are employed through Barron's Bus Company and Bus, Bussy Student Transportation Company. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers safely transport more than 8,700 students. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers travel more than 1 million miles total over the course of each school year. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers deal with many challenging situations each day, including inclement weather and traffic. Whereas, Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers are the first people to greet many of our students each morning and the last to say goodbye each afternoon. Therefore, let it be resolved, this, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers for supporting the safety and sense of belonging of our students and declares February 20th, 20, through the 24th, 2023, to be School Bus Driver Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And we'll call Mr. Jim Delwo forward. And as he makes his way to the podium, I just have to say, for years now, I have started my first day of school by riding a bus route with our students, welcoming our students and our families along that route. And it's, it's always fun for me just to engage and interact. But I always have to say that our bus drivers are oftentimes the first and last staff that our students see. And, and they can set the stage for a great day, and they can celebrate a great day. And so, I just can't thank our bus-driving staff enough. I've spoken with the owners and all the bus drivers at their, at their facility, just letting them know how much they're appreciated. This is one week that we recognize it, but daily, they are appreciated here in PLSAS. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Delwo.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, School Board, Dr. Thomas. Just briefly, I know the bus company, and I appreciate the proclamation and the recognition. It is every day I deal with the bus company, first call in the morning at 5:00, 4:30 some days if there's weather, and then wrap up to review the day at the end of the day. Lot of support. Drivers are great. Excuse me. Jody Swedberg helps support that program. Maureen Mullin. And, yeah, great service. Everything they do is with kids in mind and safety. So, I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Big thanks to our bus drivers next week. Next week? Next week? That's great. We'll move on to our policies. We review, we have a review cycle per board policy for all our policies. And currently, our first reading of policy is for Policy 515, 515. We brought this forward at a board study session for its first review. And the only major change in this one was around opting out language enhancements. So, if the.
And Dayton Place of Birth.
Right.
Yes, yes. Removal of Dayton Place of Birth. Thank you. So, any, any questions? Okay, we'll, we'll keep moving that one forward. There are no second reading of policies. Now, we're on to board policy approval. We do have a slate tonight. We, we can decide the will of the board if we want to separate any out from the group, which we may want to do for deeper dives, or approve them all. So, does anyone have thoughts on that?
I, I would prefer if we could pull out the student discipline and the bullying policy, if possible, just for more discussion. I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in the passing of it. The first and second reading was that prior to us being sworn in, correct? No?
It will be discussed in January.
Yeah, they were discussed in January.
Okay, so, can you just give me, I should know this, but please give me the, how it, how it, like, first reading, we.
We introduce.
We introduce, and that's at a regular board session, correct?
Study session.
At a, the first reading is at a study session.
Martha's our expert.
Yeah, please share, Martha.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, then maybe we don't need to. I don't know.
Well, we can pull them out to discuss, and I think we should. Because you, you, we've had a lot of questions about those. So, we'll pull those out to discuss. We'll do that first. And then we'll move on. So, let's do them one at a time, if, if that's the will of the board.
I would agree.
Okay. The first is Policy 506, Student Discipline. I am going to ask for a motion to approve 506 Student Discipline.
All made.
By Director France, and a second.
Second.
By Director Velazquez. And we will open it up for discussion based on the changes that are proposed, which there was significant language changes.
Correct. This is one that we had our general counsel do a thorough review. So, you have the track change copy attached as well.
Yeah, and there's a history behind this one. We actually went through the 500s last year before the end of the fiscal year and passed it, but then agreed as the board at that time that this, that this one and the bullying policy need to be renewed. So, I think it was sometime in October where it was brought back up, that we needed to bring this one back up. And so, we've had legal counsel and multiple people renew it, review it and give feedback since, what, November, December, I believe. And then discussed it. Now, there's still been some tweaking going on because of all the suggestions and changes and comments and things like that. Sometimes stuff gets missed. But I think, from what I read, most of our combined comments have been included in here so far, as well as, as Dr. Thomas said, an extension, an extensive legal review, which we kind of figured out when we looked at it after all the changes in legislatures and legislative action and the, the, the time it took from the previous review. So, there was quite a few. As you can tell, it looks like a Christmas tree, actually, on the, on the paper here.
Hard to follow. Other feedback questions, concerns from Board Directors?
So, the only thing I have is that I've looked at a lot of different districts at this very same, similar policy. And it's, it's similar at most districts. And the one thing that I know I've called out on email is that under, hard to say which page it is. I apologize. I know, you know.
Could you just read the section and the number?
Yeah, number four, Code of, Code of Student Conduct, Section Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
And then you go all the way down to Point Number R, where we're talking about basically, if a student was to possess, and it starts out, we start out with saying if they possess a weapon or if they possess ammunition, or if they possess explosives or fireworks, which would all be very bad things to possess in school, right? Particularly fireworks and ammunition. But then we go into talking about Point R, where it says possession of nuisance devices or objects which cause distractions and may facilitate cheating, including but not limited to pagers, radios, and cell phones, including picture phones. And so, when I read this first, my question is, is that if we're saying in our policy that we can't, you know, allow some of these other things in our school district, and now under Point R, we're saying we don't allow pagers, radios, phones, including picture phones, how does that, how does that tie back to how kids are using cell phones currently in our district? And I know we, we talked about this, right?
Right.
And so, I looked at some other districts, the way they have it written. And what they'll say is the possession of nuisance devices or objects which cause distractions and may facilitate cheating. which cause distractions and may facilitate cheating, period.
And stuff, yeah.
And then, they would have a specific cellphone use policy, separate from, like, in addition to, I should say. They would have a cellphone use policy in addition. So I think is this, I think we need to have a deeper discussion on what does this mean for our district? This particular point regarding the cellphones and, you know, do we leave it in? Do we leave it out? Do we add to the policy? You know, like, I mean-
Yeah, I concur that clearly this is carryover language of an era that really doesn't exist. I'm sure kids are like, what are pagers? What's a BlackBerry, right? I mean, there's a lot of things. So I think the hard stop after cheating, but not be limited, because twenty years from now, or ten years from now, however fast technology changes, whatever we put in there following is going to be outdated as well. So I think just a hard stop after cheating. Technology policy can be a whole separate conversation, separate from this, but I think that's, that's a point well taken.
Working in healthcare, once in a while, I do a pagers, and we do have radios. But yes, we took out the phones, including picture phones and things like that. I'm under the, I am under the opinion also that, that an actual cellphone policy does not belong in here. But we did have a fairly lengthy discussion, the fact that this policy has trickled down effect into a lot of other policies that we currently have, and the language of which, that we're not under review at that time, but when they do come under review, that we would have to make sure that we had eliminated conflicts and also strengthened it. Now, we do have a technology use and device use policy that we haven't reviewed in, after this one. I'm not even quite sure where it comes up.
Is it in the?
I'd have to look at the sequence.
The two-hundreds?
No, it's in the, I can't remember. But anyways, I know that's coming up, and I know that's an area that has to happen. Otherwise, this, this policy itself, when you look at all the other nuances, it would become a book. As far as the review of, of, you know, the language and all that, I'm okay with what it is right now. We have teachers running around with radios on and things like that, and pagers. I know that most kids don't have them, but we do have them still. So I don't mind necessarily the, the language, per se. I know that we had already updated the language previous to this to bring it more into the twenty-first century. But I would suggest that we, that we actually discuss, you know, this policy in light of the technology use, acceptable use of technology, ethical code of conduct, et cetera, with that, which this clearly overlays.
Other comments from board directors? It was a good catch, in my opinion, because it was language that needed updating. So we've updated it. I'm comfortable with it as is. I also think there are enhancements to the acceptable use policy that we need to revisit and discuss. And from a, from a high level, you know, where I see it from a board perspective is, depending on the age, depending on the building, depending on, you know, PSCE or uni, the, the use of devices is going to look different. And so, for us to have a policy super-specific around that, that's, that's a conversation we'll have to have with the acceptable use. But I support the, the changes as proposed. And I appreciate the catch that you made around phones.
So with the strikeout of the-
Yeah, hard stop after nuisance.
And I think there'll be more to come on that conversation, but-
And I believe it's five-twenty-four, and I think that was twenty-twenty-two that the board reviewed at last.
So, okay.
In the spring. I know that we've, we've had this come up multiple times. You know, I do have a question, and it doesn't mean a change, any more changes to the policy because I think the language is, is, is pretty good right now, especially with the latest adjustments. But don't, and this came up several times during the other policy discussion, too. And that was with legislative action with regards to actually implementing some of the disciplinary, and it was brought up that it's now illegal if somebody is caught with something that's their, even if it violates policy, if it's over a certain value, we, we can't, we have certain limitations with what we can do with it if it's a personal property, if they're, if they're caught with it, like-
Like a very expensive pager.
Or fireworks. Like a very expensive pager, or even some, like, vaping devices and things like that. There have been, and I don't know if Dr. Thomas, you, the attorneys brought that up when they were going through this?
They didn't, and you're talking about the possible confiscation or holding of personal property and case law around that. No, that was not something that was brought into this conversation. But I, I will say that irrespective of policy, what I'm hearing from both you and Director Atkinson is the ability to tighten up the regulation vis-à-vis our handbooks. So we have policy that says something, but our regulation can become more restrictive and be more explicit. So again, the practice of confiscating a cellphone, and again, many years ago when I was a principal, we confiscated a cellphone and put it in the teacher's desk drawer, and that phone was stolen. So my building was on the hook for fifteen hundred dollars to buy a cellphone, which flip phones cost fifteen hundred dollars back then, I think it was. But, but anyways, yeah, I think that's a slippery slope around the confiscation of personal property. And so, that's something I think we can explore specifically as it pertains to our handbooks. I am in conversation right now, I know our middle schools have adjusted their protocols this year for cellphones, and they have had a really good response in terms of how that has changed the, the community, the learning community. I did meet with some staff members there who have an interest in exploring, you know, if they want to take it a step further. But we're going to, you know, look at this pilot that they put into place this year, talk with staff and administration and families to understand, is there going to be some changed practices at, at the middle school level? And again, we know as middle school, we really have to kind of tighten up the parameters, and then we can loosen up again at, at high school, just for sheer developmental, you know, awareness for our kids. But I think there's an opportunity there, and I know our, our staff are engaged at that level right now, which takes, I think, policy a little bit more granular, so.
Yes, I think, and by the way, this, this policy is all-encompassing. It's, it's not about just one piece or another. It's kind of like a guiding process, and then it does have to be implemented at the local building level and also in other policies, for that matter. But I would like to see a larger discussion and also hear feedback from how the changes are going at the middle school, ideas, feedback from parents, et cetera. I think that that should warrant a topic at a study session going forward.
Definitely agree.
Definitely can.
Yeah, I would concur. I mean, I have a student at the middle school, and my understanding is the pilot is in sixth and eighth grade is what they're piloting currently, is that correct?
It's actually supposed to be all grades.
Oh, okay, apologies.
I think the, the practices vary from grade level to grade level, and I think that's part of my learning of this pilot, that when you don't have a consistent practice, leave it to middle schoolers, they'll find the break, right? So, yeah, I mean, so it's, generally speaking, it's, it's much better than it was last year. Do we have an opportunity to improve and revisit that? Absolutely, and that's what I'm doing with the administration.
That's wonderful.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, any other comments? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, all in favor of approving Policy five-oh-six, student discipline?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, against? That passes six-zero. Also, in a separate view, we are, we will look at Policy five-oh-six-point-one, bullying prohibition. Can I get a motion to approve five-oh-six-point-one bullying prohibition?
So made.
By Director Velazquez, second by Director Atkinson. Great. Questions, concerns about this policy? We did not have significant changes here.
No.
Again, the history of this was, we pulled out five-oh-six-point-one first in light of legislative changes also for bullying, and the majority of the changes ended up in the general discipline policy because this almost read almost exactly to the statute.
Okay.
Yeah, and my understanding is there may be a bill that their legislature is working on around bullying, so obviously, we'll have to watch that and what type of impact it has on this policy.
Absolutely.
That's where Martha keeps us on our toes, okay.
Is that, that bill didn't pass last year, and they re, they did it again this year? What is the, does anyone know the history on that? And if we do pass it, obviously legislature trumps the policy.
Right, based upon what's in the statute, then we would go back and essentially, this is mirrored. So we would look at mirroring that moving forward with any changes at the legislative level.
Okay, great. All in favor of approving Policy five-oh-six-point-one bullying prohibition?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, that passes six-zero. The remaining policies, if you are comfortable with them, and I believe we did decide that, can all be approved as a slate. I'll list them just to be thorough. Policy eight-oh-four, energy efficiency. Policy one-oh-one, legal status of the school board. Policy one-oh-one-point-one, name of the school district. Policy one-oh-two, equal educational opportunity, a minor language change there. Policy one-oh-three, complaints, students, employees, parents, other persons. Policy one-oh-four, school district mission statement. Policy three-oh-one, school district administration. Policy three-oh-two, superintendent, again, a small language change. Policy three-oh-three, superintendent selection. Three-oh-four, superintendent job description. And Policy three-oh-six, administrator code of ethics. Can I get a motion to approve that list of policies?
So made.
Was that Director William? Okay, and a second?
Second.
Director Velazquez, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. On to administrative reports. We will start with Ariana. Okay, who, can I steal your thunder? We have to celebrate Ariana. She has made a decision. She's going to TCU next fall, so she's going to find some warmer temperatures.
That would be nice.
She's going to become a horned frog, I believe that's what they are.
Yes, horned frog, that's what they do.
So congratulations, we're excited for you.
Some warmer weather will be good. Okay, so at the high school today, we kicked off our Sweethearts Week. This morning, we had our pancake breakfast. And then, tonight, actually, started at six and went till seven, we had our coronation for our Sweethearts Court. And then, on Wednesday, we have our royalty bus tour, and then Pet Fest on Friday. And then, on Saturday, we have our dance from eight to eleven P.M. And the theme is Sweethearts, so very Valentine's, semi-formal, so like, homecoming. And then, we also announced our Spirit Days last week. Today was Get Up and Go Day, so I'm wrapping my PJs today. Tomorrow's Valentine's Colors. Thursday, or Wednesday, is Dress Your Best. Thursday is College Apparel, and Friday is Laker Gear. And then, throughout the week, we'll also be hosting Minute to Win It games during lunch. We'll have a medallion hunt, and tomorrow, we are selling or delivering roses during second hour. So it'll be a fun-filled week, we're excited, so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Crosby, just a couple of things. Living proof, we turn out top-quality talent from this district going on to TCU. Congratulations, so proud of you. A couple of things, actually building off the Sweethearts Week. You know, you get emails on a variety of things when you're a superintendent, and this one here was hitting my email box over the past several weeks around celebrations in our, in our schools. And specifically as it pertained with Valentine's Day coming tomorrow, and a lot of questions around classroom parties, card exchanges, et cetera. And it was brought to my attention that in our student handbooks, we have language in there that essentially states that we will have curricular-based parties, but others such as Christmas, Valentine's Day, a host of Halloween, I think was named, they named a few as examples. We will not be engaging in those, and, and things of that nature. So there was, there was conversation about that, needless to say, in my email box. And as I thought about this, you know, there, there's a history as to why the celebrations were omitted in our schools. And I'm not here to question previous administrations and boards to have conversations about that, to make those kind of decisions. I will say that, from my vantage point, I think we have a missed opportunity as our handbooks are written, that really stifles our ability to recognize and to celebrate and appreciate the various cultures, traditions, ceremonies, things of that nature that exist within our community. You know, we had one of our community members this evening speak to the fact of, you know, we live in a very global society, and a variety of perspectives our students interact with on a day-to-day basis, our staff interact with on a day-to-day basis. And so, I did some digging, yeah, and I'm going to claim my naivete. I thought, okay, Valentine's Day, what's the history of Valentine's Day? And so, there is a line going back to Saint Valentine, which I guess is rooted in Christianity, I would say loosely, as the research that I looked at. And then, there was a poet that really kind of took that a step further for a gift exchange of giving poems to folks. And then Hallmark came along, and I think erased that whole historical path. And so, honestly, I don't think the average citizen thinks of Valentine's Day maybe rooted in Christianity, but maybe many do. So I'm not here to talk about that. But what I am saying is, there's an opportunity, particularly given what's been going on in our world, what's been going on locally here in our community, to embrace the notion of love, kindness, friendship, building bridges for folks in our classrooms, and there's great ways that we can do that. Valentine's Day is just one example, and I think there are hundreds of other opportunities for us as a community to celebrate. And I think this is something that my administration team and I will work to revise moving forward for our new handbook starting next year, to put together a celebration calendar that's reflective of the variety of opportunities that our teachers could teach about in our classrooms, have some celebrations and recognitions in our classrooms. I am mindful and will uphold our health and wellness policies. We are not going to bring cupcakes and sweets and all that kind of stuff into our classrooms. But there are plenty of ways to align to art standards, social studies standards, ELA standards, you know, to write a friendship poem, right? I mean, there's ways that we can incorporate this and recognize and celebrate the wonderful diversity of traditions, of faith values, of holidays and experiences that we have in our community. So I want to share with our board and our community that though there's no policy on this, this, this was a lot of conversation in our community, and this is something from an administrative standpoint that I'll be revising moving forward so that we can embrace those celebratory opportunities within our schools. And my ask as we go through this is that just find ways to bring balance. You know, again, I fully understand, you know, the whole notion of church-state and all these other kind of barriers that exist. But, you know, if you're going to, for example, if you're going to talk about Christmas, please talk about Hanukkah. If you're going to, you know, talk about, you know, one aspect, bring a- If you're going to, you know, talk about, you know, one aspect, bring a balancing perspective as well so that folks really understand the breadth of who we are as a community and who we are as people. So that's one of my updates I wanted to share with the board. I also want to share that we are in the process of seeking feedback from our community. We do an annual survey with our students, our staff and our families. And we have a new partner this year that we're working with, Studer Education. And they have put out a survey. And I'll tell you, my first, you know, couple of months here, I did my own listening sessions with our community and learned lots. And a lot of the feedback that I heard from our community really informed my practice as your superintendent to enter in these key areas that I heard. And I want to remind our community, our staff and our students, your voices matter to us as a district. We only are as strong as we understand we are. And that is by way of seeking, you know, authentic perspectives, you know, from our community. So please make sure, I know that today we sent out an email with a QR code to our families. I think I have a little cheesy video that I put together for everyone. I will not win any awards for that. But I will tell you that your voice matters, your perspectives, your opinions matter. It really helps to influence what we do here in our district and become that premier district of choice. So please, I can assure you confidentiality is the utmost. There is no way that we can isolate individual responses or know who's responding. We also are governed by a third-party entity that will not disaggregate data beyond an identical identifiable number. And so if it gets too small, if one person from a category fills out, we won't be able to understand that one perspective. So they have a threshold to keep anonymity. Our students, you are also welcomed to to take that as well. And please, I was just meeting with one of our fourth graders today at one of our elementary schools. Our young people are amazingly articulate and have the ability to tell us as adults what they need to be successful. And I always say, we just need to adjust our adult listening frequency. They know a lot, even at elementary, you know, our upper grades, four, five and six, they really, really have a command for what they need. Our high schoolers as well. Clearly, we have, you know, one of our high school students sitting on our board to bring perspective. So I can't stress enough, please take the time to complete that survey. It's really going to help us as we move forward through our legislative ideals, our budgeting, our staffing, our programmatic developments. So thank you in advance for for doing that. And then lastly, we you heard a little bit today about the math pilot that we're engaged in. And we'll be finishing up that pilot to bring our learnings to the board as we engage our board around a curricular adoption. But the materials also for our community, and this is a change that I've asked to institute this year moving forward, I want our community to put eyes and put hands on on the materials. So whatever curriculum that we decide to engage in for an adoption, we will always publicly avail those materials for folks to come up. They are right in the front entryway by the front desk. Please, community, come to our our central office. Take the opportunity to look through the pages of our two math curricula that we are piloting. There's no feedback or anything on those. It's just raw, unfiltered for you to kind of page through. If you do have specific questions and you want to talk with somebody, please let someone at the front desk know. We can also get one of our math specialists or someone to meet with you or answer any questions that you might have or whatever content it might be moving forward as well. So again, in that spirit of transparency, curriculum is huge. And it's something that I want our community to put eyes on and look at a variety of manipulatives and materials that we would be using in our classrooms and get your perspectives too on that. So those are my updates I wanted to share. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair Crosby.
Thank you. Are there any administrative updates tonight?
None from the admin team.
Okay, great. Board reports, board members.
I can I can start? I have three. I'm gonna try to be brief. I know that's a challenge, but anyway.
It's fine.
But Jess and I are gonna tag team on one of them, so. And actually, Dr. Thomas stole some of our, you know, already started out with the the teaching and learning committee. So my first update I have is it seems like a million years ago, we attended the MSBA workshops, which were fantastic and from the keynotes. And the one update I'm gonna give is a presentation that I went to on student voices. And it's very interesting to me how one district, Red Wing's Red Wing School District, implemented the student voices, which my understanding after talking to Sam Oak is that we've done the we've done this in the past as well. But after watching the videos of the students, some key takeaways came out of it. And the one key takeaway was really the focus on relationships. And how whether it was the key to this is the relationships that we're missing in our current day and age and how this was impacting students in the schools. And whether it was a peer-to-peer relationship, a peer-to-school relationship, or even a peer-to-parent relationship. And this led to a more robust conversation on changes that multiple school districts, Mendota Heights, Red Wing, and then there was one other district, that were implementing cell phone use policies throughout the district. And Red Wing did a full implementation of a cell phone use policy in their district. And then Mendota Heights implemented a program called Live More Screen Less.org. And then there was another district that implemented No Tech Tuesdays. So basically, like putting the tech away and just having that one day a week. And really saw the joy in the kids' faces as they were trying to starting to create more positive relationships with one another. That led to my second board update was I was very curious about the Live More Screen Less.org. It's a Minneapolis-based organization. So I did a phone call with a representative from the board. And I would love to see if this representative could come to our board retreat on March 9th, or if it's a study session or wherever it's appropriate, to share more information about the Live More Screen Less program. This program is a program that, like I said, is Minneapolis Twin Cities-based. It's been fully implemented in the Fairbolt School District. And it's just, like I said, it focuses on digital well-being. So while we gave out a lot of technology during COVID, it's really teaching kids how to be responsible with the technology that was issued as well as like how to balance the usage, so live more, screen less. And it's a full-blown program that they can, like I said, they've been implemented at other school districts in this in the state. My third update has to do about the teaching and learning, and I will keep this briefs as I know Jessica will have some else to add to this as well. But like you mentioned, Gwen gave an update on thirty-seven different teachers are piloting the math program. I was excited to hear that we are gonna have the curriculum out here in district services for parents to come and take a look at that as well. There was some discussion about the two different programs, but they will be giving a full update, I believe, in March to the board at a study session on that as well. There was another conversation about a review process, a review process currently in place with media center and classroom book selection review. And there's just been a lot of questions around what is our process? And so Mr. Edwards and team are putting together, including the media specialists, teachers are putting together a more robust process on what does that look like in reviewing materials in both the classrooms as well as within the libraries to have a procedure in place. And I will stop there and I will let, like I said, Jessica can add the rest of the meeting as well, so.
Sure, no, I don't have I don't have too much to add. I just I want to say that this curriculum, choosing different curriculums is just absolutely fascinating. There's so much that goes into it. There are so many different timelines involved and people involved and representatives. And you talk to the different community members who are part of this, I'm sorry, the staff members that are part of this process. And it's just fascinating to watch and just kind of see it all play out and the time commitment that goes into it, into a pilot program. And, you know, it was it's it's been said multiple times too and earlier this evening as well that no curriculum is perfect. And I think that's important to keep in mind too. But it's just a fascinating process. And I'm really looking forward to hearing more and what's kind of being discussed for math and what's going to be chosen or come for a recommendation to the board. And it's just, it's a fascinating process to learn and just sit in on. And I just appreciate so much more than I even did before what goes into it. And so really looking forward to March and hearing that and being part of this committee because it's very, very, it's very fascinating to watch. So I'm excited to be a part of it.
You both. Any other board reports?
I would just say that I concur with the whole MSBA conference was it exceeded my expectations on all levels. I from the from the beginning to the end, you know, the a few of the things that I attended were things on Robert's Rules. And I I attended a legal session. I attended a session on culture and core values. And in all of them, I was I was just really grateful to be given the opportunity to be there. So I think that that was fabulous. The C report, you know, we Tammy touched on that the bill was passed for providing free breakfast HF5, providing free breakfast and lunches to all public schools in both traditional and charter settings and a number of students in parochial schools. That bill passed the House. The next in line for, oh, what what else did I highlight here? The bill passed the full House of Representatives on a party line vote of seventy to fifty-eight after an amendment that would have increased the income eligibility guidelines for free or reduced price lunch was defeated. I loved hearing that the legislature is seem is seems to be following a different path this year, passing pieces of major legislation individually. I think that that is helpful for all involved that when things are broken out. Next in line for this approach will likely be HF20, the bill that would make between-term education employees, typically bus drivers and paraprofessionals eligible for unemployment during their downtime between school years. So that was my C committee update report. Finance committee meets March 23rd and will be having a second town hall event in April. I'm also part of the Early Learning Advisory Council, which will be meeting March 6th. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And I texted you because I was like, what what do we need to do as a new board member? What what report should I do? And so then I was like, okay, I'm gonna prepare something.
It was lovely.
Yes.
Thank you, all of you. Director France, Director Velazquez, any updates?
I'm.
You can arm wrestle from the mic.
Oh, I I just wanted to remind the community that the middle school History Day is going on on Wednesday morning and two sessions. I know they put out a call for judges, but History Day is probably one of the cornerstones of critical thinking. And I personally love it. I learned so much from the from the students, their excitement about the topic that they've chosen is is just enlightening. It's refreshing and it you leave very, very happy. And then also last week, MinCaps had their business showcase. And that was the largest business class, the pathway class that they've had ever. The place was packed. There were cars out in the street going down Juniper. And as a MinCaps mentor, I loved seeing my student and and her team present, but also the other ideas. And these were ideas that many of them chose or came up with as well as businesses that came. And the learning and the sophistication that those students experience, being out with businesses and trying to come up with business solutions is truly astounding. And every year, that program gets better and better. So hats off to Glenna Stone and her program and everybody who worked hard to bring that to where it is today.
Great.
All right, thank you. January 17th, we had the organizing meeting and business meeting for Southwest Metro Education Foundation. There were a couple of different updates that we received there. There were a number of new governing board members. So we had the opportunity to receive a presentation from the superintendent, Darren Kermes, on what exactly Southwest Metro does and what services they deliver to our eleven-member districts and currently six associate members. So eleven voting members and then six others that are kind of trying before they buy in. It's one way to characterize it. Just a host of different programming with respect to special ed level four for those that are not able to receive support in self-contained programs within their own districts. Career and technical education, training, alternative education, care and treatment, day treatment, going into correctional facilities and providing educational support services for those who are incarcerated and need that pathway to something else once they're released from custody. Just a host of feel-good programs that are really making a difference for those. For many of these students, this is their first, last, best opportunity to change their stars and find a find a new path. Superintendent Kermes offered to come and present to our board as well to share this presentation and all of the great things that they're doing. So I opened that. Leave that there with you. Yes. Let's see, in terms of staffing, they did make some staffing changes with respect to their online learning program, Elevate Online. The program itself has not brought in the number of ADMs that they anticipated when launching the program. So they're adjusting it down a little in terms of staffing to basically right-sizeing, get as close to revenue neutral or cost neutral as possible. So some of the staff have switched from online instruction to in-person, which it's a win on both sides because they didn't necessarily have full classes and are able to transition to continue doing that work in in-person settings and filling the needs presented by some different vacancies that were there. Let's see, February 25th will be the. I forgot what they are. It's. Ambulance, first responder. It's the state. What are those people in the ambulance? Oh, my gosh.
DMTs?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Just had the I hadn't read them.
We're going on two and a half hours.
Yes, so the DMT state competition is going to be held. Southwest Metro has typically fielded a large team to that. I'm not quite sure how many are from Prior League Savage, but it's year over year, it's a rollicking good time and they're looking for actors, Dr. Thomas. Looking for people to play the victims or to be judges or just volunteer for the event. That's coming on February 25th.
Is this their certification, part of the certification also?
Certification and state competition to see who is the best student DMTs.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
All right.
And Southwest Metro typically places fairly well.
Great.
Special Education Advisory Council, we meet next week on Thursday, the 23rd at 5:00.
Thank you.
I will be there.
Enrique, are you guys still looking for, is that committee still looking for additional people? Because I know they've had, is there something, is there a call out for that?
We are always looking for parents and community members who are willing to come in and engage as.
Be part of that committee?
Steady contributing members to seek.
I'm I'm I don't know if I could make it, but I'm asking because.
We actually had a pretty good turnout the last this year, better than I I anticipated. So not a ton. So not a ton, but maybe a dozen or so were at the last meeting and, which is a little bit more than the first one. So sending out a reminder this week, so hopefully we'll get a little more.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have a lot to report on. I did attend scale last Friday. A lot of leadership from our county there. It's very well-attended. I filled in for Director Burnick, who was out of town. New Prague Schools gave a presentation that was enlightening as to, you know, all sorts of things they have going on in their district. Their superintendent is retiring at the end of the year. So they will be on the hunt for a new superintendent. There was a lengthy presentation on the watershed soil water conservation district as well. I have done a few AMSD Zooms and most of the content that we're getting out of those is all about legislative updates, what's going, what's going on in real time as it relates to their platform. Free lunch was, or universal lunch was obviously a hot topic. The MSBA conference was great. I would, I would agree. Last week, the last two weeks, I did the MSBA officer training as well. So trying to facilitate the best I can so we can have productive discussions and hopefully getting better and better. Want to thank Director Atkinson for giving each of us this card, which is a little cheat sheet on Robert's Rules, which is helpful for running our meetings from the MSBA. This came from MSBA. Lastly, we did discuss a study session format change. And I think we anticipate that'll go into effect in March. I'm not sure we can get it done by the end of February, but that'll create a more conducive environment to better communication as a group instead of having this formal setting. So that's the plan. More to come. It's looking like March because there are some technological challenges. Nothing Marcus can't tackle, but. Yeah, thank you. Lastly, and this relates to future events, which I'll just roll into that. But February twentieth is President's Day in our school. February twenty-seventh is our board study session and then not listed but upcoming. And it is posted March ninth, we're doing board development. In, in that vein, we will always look to get better, to communicate together as a board. And we have new leaders in our district. We have new board members. So I think there will be a discussion there about how to communicate better, how to, how to be more efficient. And one of the things that, that's on the table and I would say we can, was a good suggestion for moving forward now is that if any board member has suggestions for agenda items for upcoming meetings, to please email Director France and me so that we have a record of it and we can discuss the potential for putting that on the agenda and then we have a process for it. We can formalize that on March ninth, but I just want to throw that out there now to improve our communication. All right. Is that everything? I think so. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to adjourn and transition to a closed meeting.
So may it.
By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six-zero, opposed. Well, nobody. So we'll take a little breather before we go to closed session.